It's a flurry. We're depressed. I think so. We've got our phones out there.
It was. And so. Do you have yours, Jenna?
I do.
Okay. Okay. Which clock are we going back? One minute.
Yeah.
It's for July. We need work far from that.
Thinking.
Far from that. There's that one. Grab it up. It's on there.
Oh, I would have gotten it.
You want to sign that one too, babe?
Oh, is that?
She wants the special one, please. And then there's going to be a whole mass. Amounts of papers studying to sign before you leave here today.
Okay.
So don't. Exit stage low.
I won't do that to you. All right. Yeah? All right. Go ahead and call the meeting to order if you'll stand and say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, welcome everyone tonight with the ugly weather today. We do have a couple changes to the agenda. I believe the ones that were handed out when you came in are correct. I will try to read off the most current one here and not get us all confused. Public input, we don't have any as far as I know. Nothing was written on the paper here. And we are going to go ahead and move up Resolution 0819 in recognizing one of our officers. We have Resolution 082019. It's a resolution of the township of South Landery Township of Lebanon County proclaiming February 12th, 2019 Officer Nicholas Agoo Day. Whereas Nicholas Agoo is a police officer of South Landery Township. And whereas Nicholas Agoo is named Officer of the Year by the Lebanon County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 42. And whereas the Board of Supervisors desire to recognize Officer Nicholas Agoo for his contribution to the township, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the Township of South Landery, Lebanon County, Pennsylvania to officially recognize. Sorry, guys, I should have waited for them to come in. To recognize February 12th, 2019 as Officer Nicholas Agoo Day duly adopted on this day, the 12th of February, 2019 by the Board of Supervisors of South Landery Township, Lebanon County, Pennsylvania in lawful session duly assembled.
Thank you.
That was a lot to say. And I missed your daughter's not here, so I'm sorry. And you don't want this one. Look at the sign. No, no, you're on it.
We still have to have Jack sign it.
And Jack is not here. Yes. I can give this to you. Thank you for all your hard work and your work nights.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
Yeah. This way. You want to hold it? Bill, do you want to come up? I should have dressed nice, sir. We were taking a couple of photos.
I dressed for the occasion. Who am I looking at?
Your wife. Just look at your wife.
He looks at me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
All right. And we'll get that. Do you want to give me that one back, Nick? Not to give you an award and take it back, but we'll get it signed by Jack when he comes back. Sorry.
No, that's quite all right. Thank you very much.
Jack is stuck in New Hampshire. He was on a trip and the roads are closed for anyone calling trailers, so he was not able to get back in enough time to, for the meeting this evening. All right. Approval of meeting minutes, January 7th meeting minutes. So I have a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
And I'll second. All those in favor, aye. Motion to approve January 7th Board of Supervisor meeting minutes. Sorry, the first one was the reorganization minutes. These are the regular minutes. So I have a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
And I'll second. All those in favor, aye. And motion to approve January 23rd Board of Supervisor Workshop meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Okay, and I'll second. All those in favor, aye. We have Bill and Payroll 119. So I have a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
And I'll second. All those in favor, aye. Motion for 219.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. All those in favor, aye. And 319.
Motion to approve.
And I'll second. All those in favor, aye. Jenna, do you want to do your report? Hold on. Sorry. Good thing you're. Oh, I forgot to mention, we have several recorders tonight. Tucker Enterer.
Ettnower.
Ettnower, Carissa Castle, Dot Agoo, and Dawn Block are recording for their own personal recording of the minutes. And Jenna is recording for accuracy of the minutes.
Are you ready for my report?
Yes. Sorry, not for you.
That's okay.
Take your time.
Just wanted to kind of bring up a few things. Lebanon County is having a tire collection at Lebanon Expo Center on April 17th, Wednesday from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. You do have to pre-register for this if you are interested in it. You can bring a tire that's off the rim, drained of water, unburned, and not excessively dirty. Let me know and we can get you pre-registered for it. There's the first, I think it's $3 a tire, and there's $150 in our kitty for the township. So when that money runs out, it's done. So if anybody wants to see me about that for a registration form, you're welcome to do that. We are looking for new insurance quotes for the township. Our insurance expires on March 4th. We did get a quote from Bowman's and I'm waiting for the Strickler quote to come back, which is our current provider.
So are you looking to have us possibly approve that at the workshop then?
Either, yes. Because they would have to backdate it if it held up to the March. So they did request that we would have an answer. But I need to get Strickler's information. Based on what I have now, it looks like if we go to Bowman's with the same insurance and actually better in some areas, it will save us about $8,000 a year. Depending on what Strickler's comes back at at the end of the year, but I don't know.
We, remind me, when was the last time? Do we quote every year? You have not.
No, it's usually every other year for services like that. We do. FEMA, we received finally our information that we were waiting for from the county in order to complete our FEMA letters that we have to send out to people who are newly placed in the floodplain, out of the floodplain, or a building on their property has either been partially moved into it. So check the website. You should receive a letter within the next two weeks if your property has been affected in any of those ways.
We're sending out either way, whether you were taken off or put in, correct?
Yes, off, in, or partial. Partial building in, partial building out. If you're serving on a board in the township and you have not completed your statement of financial interest, please return it. You may file them online. If you need help filling it out, let me know. Act 172, the volunteer fire credits. I'm still missing some forms for people who said that they were, that they were okay to receive the credit. And I still have like five or six outstanding. So if you know anybody that's in there, let me know. I have the forms available. And the MS4 program, which I'll go through when we have that item on the agenda.
Okay. All right, moving on to zoning officer. Your report?
I see I made a mistake with my first one here. I issued 16.
Not 160? Okay.
Zoning permits for the month of January, total of $953. There were seven building permits issued worth $3,347.59 and one burn permit. I had six complaints. One was snow. There was someone fell on the sidewalk because the snow wasn't removed. So I ended up mailing out 26 letters about.
To the rest of.
Yeah, reminding people in that area.
To surrounding neighbors? Okay.
That did not trouble their snow. And then I had mailed 10 letters about basketball nets that were in the right of way that are in the way of the plowing. I believe those are all taken care of now. I had two stormwater complaints. And then I had a complaint about, Pendant called about a highway occupancy permit. And it turned out it was for a timber harvest. It was a existing driveway because they changed it. They needed a permit for that. And then that forester placed a complaint with the Attorney General's Office because they had not gotten a zoning permit. So I had to have him get his own permit. So he placed a complaint with the Attorney General's Office on our forestry ordinance to make sure that, he just wants a review to make sure that it's in compliance with the acre law.
He wants the Attorney General to do the review?
Yes, they have, they have an office that, that you file any kind of agricultural complaints to make sure that you're in compliance with this law. And they review, it's mostly ordinances. Now, when I was looking at the complaints, because they're all posted online, most of the complaints are actual complaints. This gentleman just asked them to review our ordinance for compliance, so.
When do we expect that to be back? Do we have any idea?
I've not heard from the Attorney General's Office, and it hasn't been posted that they accepted it yet, so I have no idea. Some of them have not been posted. Some of them are there, posted for over a year that were not accepted yet. But then there's some that were accepted that are only a month or so old, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm having a zoning hearing, board meeting, March 14th. This is for somebody, basically it's neighbors that want to move a lot line. They are in the agricultural zone and neither property meets the requirements already for the minimum acreage. So neither one of them is going to meet the requirement once the lot line is moved, but they have to get a variance for that in order to be able to do the subdivision for the one to pay out to purchase from the other neighbor. And I'm probably going to be adding another one to that meeting for a garage with side yard setback. He's encouraging on the side yard setback. And that's also in the agricultural zone. And I got to say, in the past year, the majority of our zoning hearing boards have been in the agricultural zone. So I think that's something that Frank and I need to look at while we're doing these revisions.
Looking at, maybe put that first? Not first, but.
We're working on it. Well, I mean.
Bump it up in front of the others?
Right, but it's all going to be passed at the same time.
Oh, that's true.
But we're currently working on. I actually just met with Frank today and we were working on the agricultural zone. He is going to be presenting a list of uses for each though to the Plating Commission tomorrow night. We went through all the uses. We looked to see if there was any uses that are currently conditional use or special exception that have regulations already that we could just make it permitted use instead of having to go to the zoning hearing board. So some of those things we changed and we're going to submit that to the Plating Commission to get their opinion. I signed up for two trainings, one on MS4 and one on floodplain management.
Thank you.
We didn't pass the resolution for.
Oh.
I was going through my notes and I'm like, okay, there we are.
Okay, well, we handed it to him. Would you like to make a motion to accept Resolution 9, 2019?
I make a motion to accept Resolution 9, 2019.
No, I guess it's eight.
Oh, eight, 2019 for Officer.
Okay, and I'll second that. Sorry, all those in favor, aye.
Chairman Bucks, would you mind reading it again for people?
Sure. We moved it up so that you all could celebrate. So this is 08, 2019 Resolution, which we just passed officially. A resolution of the Township of South Landery, Lebanon County, Pennsylvania proclaiming February 12th, 2019 Officer Nicholas Agoo Day. Whereas Nicholas Agoo is a police officer for South Landery Township. And whereas Nicholas Agoo was named Officer of the Year by the Lebanon County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 42. And whereas the Board of Supervisors desires to recognize Officer Nicholas Agoo for his contribution to the township, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the Township of South Landery, Lebanon County, Pennsylvania to officially recognize February 12th, 2019 as Officer Nicholas Agoo Day duly adopted on this, the 12th of February, 2019 by the Board of Supervisors of South Landery Township, Lebanon County, Pennsylvania in lawful session duly assembled. Thank you again. Sorry, we rushed it. Are you guys all planning to sell? Do you want me to? Do you want to go now? I don't want to hold you guys up if you're all planning to celebrate. I don't need to dismiss you.
Not just yet.
Okay. You have something else? Okay. All right. Do we need to bump your report up? Are you all right? Okay.
I think I'm next in.
All right. Yes, you are. Dawn, were you down? I'm sorry. Okay. We asked the solicitor, Jenna and I asked the solicitor not to be here tonight. We didn't feel there was many things on the agenda and with the long drive. And we knew Jack was not going to be here and we weren't sure if you were going to make it out of Harrisburg or not. So instead of asking him to be here with the ugly weather, I think he travels an hour and a half. Is that, does he travel an hour and a half, Patrick?
Oh, yeah.
To get here.
I'm from Bucks.
Bucks County?
Bucks County.
So he's here because we asked him not to be, not because he tries not to be, so.
He did say he missed us because we didn't see him in January.
And he said he would have driven out, but I would have felt horrible had you not gotten out of Harrisburg and then he would have driven all that way and we wouldn't have had a meeting. So.
South Landery was great, by the way. Once I hit the township, it was great, just saying.
I've heard compliments today and also from the last snowstorm that the roads were very nicely done in our township. Moving on to the chief.
Thank you. I had told Officer Agoo that you, I was going to ask him to read the K-9 unit report. That was my ruse to get him here.
Oh, so you didn't even know? Surprise!
Yes, it was a surprise.
But I did want to read this one entry. On January 19th of this year, our K-9 unit assisted Lebanon City Police after they had a drive-by shooting where four people were shot. After the suspects fled the scene and ditched their vehicle, our K-9 unit tracked the path from their vehicle to a house where two of the suspects were found and taken into custody. One of the suspects gave up only after Officer Agu announced that he would be sending in wrecks to apprehend him if he did not come out on his own. So more excellent work already vying to be Officer of the Year 2019. But in talking to Nick about it, it was, it wasn't just, here's the car, here's the house. It was three yards over fences and just an awesome job. So another example. The only other thing I have is I'm going to ask Sergeant Castle to give a report on our yearly Operation Phil Cruiser effort. Even if he does buy it.
You're on the spot now.
Is it okay if I sit?
Sure.
And you'll have to excuse me, I have a cold, so my eye is watering and I was coughing and I had to go. The Police Department concluded our fifth year of Operation Phil Cruiser in December. This past year was our largest effort to date. Our program collects, sorts, wraps, and delivers food, clothing, hygienic products, and toys to local children and families in need around Christmas time. I'd like to personally thank the chief and the Board of Supervisors for the privilege of being able to coordinate this program each year. It's probably one of the highlights and one of the most rewarding things I get to do. Our logistical planning officially started in October with several meetings, including talking with other groups in the area. Our collection started in November and went through December. This included collection bins that were placed in the township lobby, the Mibret and Brewery, Palmyra Library, and the Palmyra Grocery Outlet. All duty officers did a total of six collections at different locations and additionally helped at the Click Lewis Auto Dealership with an event on December 15th, an event that provides assistance to local families as well. Officers also collected private donations and the officers themselves made several donations to the program. The Police Department would like to sincerely thank the local businesses and organizations that make our program possible, which this year included Renter's Markets, Palmyra Grocery Outlet, Mibret and Brewery, Palmyra Library, the Palmyra High School students, faculty and staff, the Palmyra Swim Team, and Palmyra Grace Church. We also worked this year with Lebanon Toys for Tots, which helped us meet some additional needs. A lot of time going to this, a lot of time and effort goes into this program to make it successful, to ensure that items get where they need to go. All eight South Landery officers put in off-duty time to the program. An additional 24 volunteers also helped, including the chairperson, thank you very much for that, performing tasks and functions that were essential to the program. These efforts included volunteers donating time on nights and weekends to help sort, package, wrap, and transport items. So we offer our thanks to all those volunteers who donated time to help make this all work. We tracked the time a little more closely this year and found that there was a total of approximately 210 hours spent on the program. This included 70 hours of officers' off-duty time, 20 and a half hours on-duty time, and a total of 119 and a half hours of volunteer time. And that on-duty time was mostly officers joining the off-duty officers at collection sites so they remained available for calls. I definitely want to thank my wife, Carissa Castle, for her outstanding individual effort with this program. She alone donated 55 hours of her time to all aspects of the program. She acts as the liaison for our program to the school district and coordinates much of our wrapping, sorting, and distribution efforts. Her dedication literally makes the program possible to run at its current level. This year, we provided direct assistance to more than 120 children and well over a dozen adults. In addition to the items that were distributed at Christmas time, we have since been able to use the overage to help two families that suffered house fires and another family that had contact with our department. In these instances, our program offers its reach beyond just the one-time year and allows us to make a difference throughout the year during real times of need. So we offer a huge thanks to the community and the people who have come out for the past five years and donated food, clothing, toys, hygienic products, and funds to meet the needs of their neighbors throughout Lebanon County. The people who donate make this program possible, and we sincerely want to thank those folks again.
Thank you. That's a great job.
Yeah, I know the high school and the swim team and they were really exciting, so.
They were a huge help, so our hats off to them. Big thanks.
Can you pass a resolution to change his name to Santa Castle?
What do you wear? What do you wear?
Yeah, I think you would. Wear the costume.
Oh, sure. Got the belly for it.
And that's, that's all you wanted to report?
Yeah.
All right, wonderful. Do you all want to go to your party?
Yeah, I thought they wanted me to dismiss.
Go ahead, do you want some cake? What are you having? I don't know. What did you plan? Scott, did you plan? Did he plan? Okay. Good. Well, thank you.
I said he's probably wishing he would have known before 7 o'clock that it was his day.
Short-lived. We didn't want you to get too big of a head, I guess. I don't know.
One second of a day.
All right, well, if you, do you guys want to go? I don't. Are you going to stay?
I'm sure they do. You can back in our meeting room.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah? All right. So we'll continue on with the public works. Do you want to do anything with, or do we want to hold on because this is mostly?
Yeah, this is, he just has road repairs that he wants to talk about. We'd like to get on the schedule to get bids out, so if this is something, I know we normally don't like to do things at the workshop. They are an advertised meeting, so we are legally allowed to make decisions like this at those meetings, but.
Well, Scott wanted to talk about it and I'm sure Jack would want to do some input on this also, so it makes most sense to have it at the workshop.
Yes. So I will.
Are you in agreeance?
Yeah. And I think I like Jack's questions about these things as well, so.
Yes, I agree. So we have the insurance quote and bids. I guess we're looking at Harvest Road and West Patrick. No, West Patrick and Stoffers Church. Okay, so moving on. Kendra is not here tonight. She didn't send anything in, did she?
No, I didn't.
For the library? Okay.
Probably because of the weather.
I would assume. Campbelltown, yes?
For the month of January, we had 57 calls. Average personnel per call was seven. Our average response time was two minutes and 55 seconds. We had two building fires, one chimney fire, 20 medical assists, two accidents with injuries, four accidents with no injuries, one one main break, one smoke removal, one standby, 17 dispatch canceled route, one incident no found, no found incident one, four AFAs and three carbon dioxide calls. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Lon, I'm assuming Jack was going to give that report. I don't see anyone else here from Lon. Palmyra Area Rec and Parks Commission?
I don't know anything since our last, the correspondence from the rec.
Okay. And we're working on the letter. Jenna sent us out a letter.
You saw Bill.
And I saw it also. I guess I'm fine with it.
Did you see Bill's comment?
Yes, you had additions that you wanted to add to.
I agree with that. I'll get that in there and resend it for your approval to send out.
And then get Jack's. We're getting ready, for those of you that weren't here, Palmyra Area Rec and Parks Commission, we approved to send a letter out informing them of what actually transpired with Lebanon Valley Soccer Club and how that agreement came about. There seems to be some sort of miscommunication going on, so we just wanted to clear it out.
Clarifying.
And send it to North Landery, the Borough, the School Board, and the Parks and Recs so that we're all on the same page. Minutes for review, we don't have Planning Commission because that was canceled. Historical, we do have their minutes, but it looks like it was, they didn't have a forum present, so it's just an informal of where they're at right now or what they did last month. Fire board, we didn't have. We have that every other month. That'll be this coming month. And authority minutes are also in here. Do you have any questions on any of them?
No.
There will be a Planning Commission meeting next Tuesday, just to remind everyone. The agenda should be.
Not tomorrow. You said tomorrow earlier, right? Yeah. Okay, it's next Tuesday.
Okay, I was.
I got nervous.
I was like.
Yeah, I did. I don't know.
It's okay.
Every day's tomorrow.
You said tomorrow and I thought, huh, how can that be? All right, so.
Yeah, I have a question. Planning Commission, of course, tomorrow.
Training tomorrow, tomorrow, for like coming.
Okay, so moving on to Township Official Input, do you have anything?
I just, yeah, just quickly. I mean, I've been involved with a lot of, in the state cabinet, a lot of township officials and townships. And it came to my attention, which is interestingly, when just getting into informal conversations about what we're trying to do as a township in terms of, you know, simplify and consolidate ordinances, and everyone's like, wow, you can do that. And I was like, well, yeah, we are. So it was interesting because they had a lot of, again, these were informal meetings, so not with P sets or anything, but it was interesting that. that, you know, we really need to look at something like that. Kind of made me proud as the, you know, this is what we're trying to do here in South Lebanon in terms of governance. And then I came in tonight, and, you know, we're talking about your officers, and I think it's interesting when I get in the conversations up there, because there's a lot of, believe it or not, there's a lot of township supervisors working in other capacities inside the Capitol. Some are in Senate and House offices, you know, offices, others are in, you know, various roles. So it's always interesting when I run into people and we get into these conversations. I think helped Brian to be a part of this and be a part of South Lebanon area township.
I would assume you're probably speaking to the choir. Everyone here is obviously vested in it.
But, yeah, it's... But it's interesting, even with the things we have conversations on at times, that listening to what they're going through, what we're doing, I think I'm glad to be here.
As a side note, we...
Because I've had the opposite. I mean, it's great to hear that, but I've heard the opposite, so I'm just saying.
I have not...
I mean, some people are asking how a township manager is able to work from home and run a township. I mean, so I've had opposites of, you know, I don't know who approved that, but, you know, people have asked me that. So I'm just saying, that's great to hear that, but I've heard the opposite, so...
Yeah, I'm speaking about the informal conversations.
Okay. Well, this is informal too, so...
On the side note, you were going to say?
The codification should be done by April, advertised, and with your approval. It'll be on the March agenda and done by April. Done, done.
So March agenda to look at to approve it?
And then the 30-day...
And then we advertise.
30-day waiting period.
When will it be back for us to look at? Because that's a pretty cumbersome document, to say the least.
Yeah, Patrick had to review five ordinances he asked for yesterday to cross-reference items that were listed in there, and so he said he should have that done very soon, very shortly.
Okay. Thank you for that update. It's been two years.
Yes.
It's a long process.
Since I've been here, yeah.
Okay, moving on, we did 0819, moving on to Resolution 0919. This is the Haldeman Sewer Planning Module. I don't... I do not have... They talk about the attachment of the module. Jenna, do you know?
Haldeman is just a... Yeah, here I have a... This is what they sent us, that's why.
That's why I don't have a copy of that yet. Okay.
It's just a formality.
So that wasn't in the pack?
This was not.
No, it was not.
That's what I was going to look for.
And then the next one, again, is not in your packet, but these are the only copies that they sent me, so I do need these back.
Okay.
But it's just because the county is our Surgeon Force Officer...
So this is looked over?
This is your resolution for Haldeman.
Okay, but this, all this, is the responsibility of the county to look this over?
Surgeon Force Officer to make sure everything... If there's new building, it is in that request. This would be for the Haldeman one. The other one, and it is in regard to their subdivision plan, but not the wedding venue, that's a totally separate item. And then the other item that is later on, under New Business Mount Pleasant Venture Musser, that one is a waiver request, so that one is not in the form of a resolution.
Okay.
Resolution just makes it easier for the township to find in the future, whereas something like that is buried kind of in the minutes, but it's a waiver request, so no building is being planned for the Musser-Albuck.
Okay. Do you have any questions on that?
No, I'm just... Just looking at the letter.
I just didn't want to be held responsible for that attachment, but that's something that the sewer...
That is the sewer, yeah. RSEO would take care of it.
Yeah, it looks like it's received and signed off on.
Yes. All right, so do I have a motion to approve that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 919, the Haldeman Sewer.
And I'll second it. Do I have any questions or concerns about it from anyone? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then I'm just going to stick it out there so I don't steal it from you accidentally. Okay, moving on then to Resolution 1019. This is an application for county aid, like more county liquid fuel funds in the amount of $6,991 to help offset costs with the general road maintenance in 2019. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1019, Lebanon County, 2019 aid liquid fuel funds.
And I'll second. Do I have any questions about that? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. And then Mount Pleasant Ventures, this is what we just kind of touched on here. This is a waiver request. This is... They put it shortly, they basically moved a property line, and now they're just saying that they're not going to put a sewer or build on it, correct? Am I stating that?
Non-building declaration form is what they have submitted to us.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve a waiver request for that?
I make a motion to approve that waiver request.
And I'll second. Do I have any questions on that? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Vacancy Board Appointment, we did receive a letter from Dot If You asking to sit on that.
That was the only letter of interest that we received for it, by the way.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve Dot to sit on that board?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and I'll second. Do I have any questions on that? All those in favor? Aye. Historical Commission Appointment, we don't have anyone...
I don't have any letter of interest.
No one... Okay, so we have a vacancy on that yet, and that will be on the website still?
Yes.
And the UCC...
When do they meet? When's the historical one?
It's the Monday before this meeting?
Uh-huh. It's the second Monday of the month.
And then... I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I might have someone interested. At least someone talked my ear off about the history of Campbelltown the other day in his blue book, so... In a good way.
Some more way?
In a good way. Talked my ear off in a good way, and I thought this may make sense for that person.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. The UCC Appeals Board was also something we thought we had a vacancy of, but we don't because Max is still part-time and he's willing to serve.
Yes.
So we don't have to reappoint them because he's on there until he...
Indefinitely.
Okay.
All members of the UCC Board are on there indefinitely until the Board...
Either remove them or they remove themselves. Okay. I just want to make that clear because our last meeting, we were unsure. Okay, moving on to the HVAC upgrade. So when the building was being built, someone took off this computer that runs the HVAC system. So our HVAC system is not running as efficiently as it should, so you have this bid.
What did they do?
I'm sorry?
What did they do?
I believe... I'm not exactly sure how it happened. I believe it was the old township manager took the... There's a laptop, I guess, that runs the HVAC system, and when there's errors, this displays on the laptop. I'm not an HVAC person, but from what I'm understanding, that when that was not on there, we are now having problems in our building with the building running efficiently. I know the Police Department was dealing with amazing amount of humidity. It's not registering the amount of people in the room, and I guess there's not an efficient way to fix it. Am I explaining this how you understand it?
They did fix that part of it. They picked that... Or they fixed the humidity part of it, and the knowing who's in the room and when it needed to ramp up the system. It is a software that will be able to run it more efficiently. Right now, there's two systems in line with each other, and the one system is kicking the other system out, so we'll be sitting in our office, and all of a sudden, the air conditioning goes on.
So what's this going to cost?
The one estimate that we have is $9,105.
For a computer to control the HVAC?
For the software to control the HVAC system.
This is why it was removed from the original building plan because of the cost of it, but we're... We've been in the building for over a year now, and we're seeing that it's just not running efficiently.
All right, so they... Okay.
I do have a second quote into Midstate. The guy who was running or does the quotes was off for the week and said that he'd be backed up till he came back, so I was not able to get another quote for this evening. But Spinago is who has been maintaining our system recently. Midstate was the installer that initially installed it. I'm not... I've not been 100% pleased with it. They provided to us, they forgot to install things on the system that led to all the humidity in the building, and we had to have the engineer come in and figure out that...
Can you sue them?
What's that?
Can you sue them for damages?
No, we... I mean, they fixed what they were supposed to have installed, but this $10,000 computer system was removed by the...
But for the other specs, you're saying?
Yeah, they did fix what they were supposed to...
You mean it was removed off the... So it was in the original specs?
Yes. There was a sensor that they did not install, which they did come back, install the correct sensors, and now the humidity is not as bad, but this, from what they explained to us, with this computer system, we'll be able to, right now, if the officers are on their side and they come and say it is really hot over there, we can only decrease a degree and a half in any room. With this system, we'll be able to have more flexibility and run like this room down.
Is it my understanding that when the system was installed, there was no one for the township overseeing the installation?
There was. We had a contractor, a general contracting manager that was overseeing everything, but the bids were placed for the HVAC. They were approved the way they were. The system was removed from it, I'm not sure why.
So...
Well, it's a pretty interesting question, if you're going to need $10,000 to correct it.
Well, again, it's running, but not...
There's no involvement.
Yeah, it's running, but just not as efficiently as it should be.
Come on.
And for the record, so we have you on your minutes, what is your name and your address?
Jim Pannyard, 6 Royal Road.
Thank you.
Palmyra.
So I just want to make sure I understand this, so bear with me. So the software issue, not the repairing what was supposed to be there, but the software issue was in some kind of original bid or spec?
Yes.
And then it was removed because of cost?
Because whoever was in charge of it said, you know, you can get away with not having this in here, and you'll be fine.
Was that a city official?
That was at the time. The person who removed it, it was a township official, yes.
We've changed township manager.
Is it a manager or an official? Do we have any idea?
And that's the other thing, I don't know who made the approval for it.
It could have been...
Well, it must have been signed off somewhere. There must be a record.
I'm sure whoever was sat down with the initial design and said, this is your cost, and then they went through and said, these are the things we don't want. I'm not sure how the whole process...
Yeah, but there must be a document that says that. Signed off?
There probably is, but at this point...
For the whole packet, though, not...
There'll be an original... Having done this, and done this as part of my day job, there'll also, there'll be an original...
The original bid.
There'll be the original bid, and then, you know, whoever was here at the time that was in charge of that project, you know, there would have been negotiation on that and saying, well, you probably... They probably got advice, or in this case, bad advice from...
If they're removing things from the original bid...
Not if it was... Not if the original bid was never actually agreed to, like...
Well, how did they do the work if the bid wasn't agreed to?
No, no, they'll come in before... With a number. Say it's $100,000. Like, I do this. Say it's for sake of... Say it's $100,000 for sake of argument, and I'm on the other side of the table going, I don't know, we can't spend $100,000. We can only spend 90. What here do we need?
So they've got to re-submit the bid and get the stuff out.
And then we're going to... Yeah, but that original document was never agreed to. Like, a board never sat down and approved the original document.
You never put your name on the document, which is smart, but it should be put on the document, who's making these decisions?
Right, which would have been the board and the manager at the time.
And which, I'm thinking, when we came into this building, you were in charge when we started. It wasn't...
It was already approved by the time I got here.
Right.
They broke ground the week before I started, so everything in that packet was...
Yeah, I mean, you really do have to look at...
Then it was followed through with, I mean, yes, we broke ground, but then things were, you know, we were always, you know, agreeing on this, agreeing on that, and HVAC was one of the things that we did discuss.
I'm sure...
All those things are brought before the board. It's all in the minutes.
HVAC's one of those things all the time that's changed, and like I said, I...
There were meetings that were held once a month, but they weren't even privy... Like, the supervisors didn't know that there were meetings happening once a month until Jenna came.
But I'm saying that there was constant changing with this building, constantly as things came upon that needed to be voted upon. I'll say that.
It was the...
Sure.
It was the cable that was not...
I mean, it was not fixed.
Left out the phone system that was left out, the internet that was left out.
And we all voted on those. I mean, my word, we were voting on chairs. I mean, those things were all things that...
Right, at the end of the...
And I understand what you're saying. Somebody is accountable.
No, there won't be any...
Oh, no, there won't be, but somebody should be.
Yeah, well, at the end of the day, I mean, listen, you know, I mean, if you want to talk past and you want to... Like, yeah, someone's accountable.
Well, it's not a matter of the past, it's a matter of who's paying the bill now.
Right.
For errors that were made in the past.
I agree with you.
They don't want to tell the accountable. So this pattern just goes, this is government.
Yeah, I agree with you, and, I mean, people are held accountable through elections. I mean, you had two township supervisors, one that resigned, one that quit through elections, you know? I mean, I...
And again, it should all be signed. All these things...
So the people had a chance, and they missed it, right?
No, whoever... Listen, I've been here... How long have I been here now, exactly?
I think since March.
I've been here since March, and so I came, you know, I was previously on school board, so, you know, I'm relatively new, but like going through these things and seeing how these things work, what would have happened? I mean, to be honest, local government units all the time, and I see it all the time, or what's that saying, a penny wise and a pound foolish? Yeah, they look to save money upfront, and, and that's what you can't do.
It makes no difference to the government unit, because the government unit, you and whoever else was employed by the township, doesn't pay the bill in the long run.
Well, that's not true. He is a taxpayer, I'm a taxpayer, so yes, we do pay the bill. What do you, I'm not understanding where you're going with this. At this point, there's a $9,000 piece of equipment that needs to be purchased either to make this building run more efficient or not.
Right, and why, why wasn't that stuff done originally?
Well, it could have been done originally, or we could be right here where we're at now.
May I now finish?
Sure, go ahead.
Why wasn't it done originally, and who struck it out of the documents?
And I'm asking you, what difference does that make at this point?
Someone should be held accountable.
So it would have been spent back then, or it will be spent now?
Well, number one, economically, it would have been cheaper to spend it back then.
How do you know that?
Is the cost of living gone down reasonably? Is the cost of inspection gone down reasonably?
And maybe the software would have needed to be updated, I mean, we could play what if all day.
Okay, that's fine, I mean, I, I, that's fine, 'cause there's nothing that can or will be done about it, so...
Well, there is something that can be done about it, we either buy it or we don't. Yes.
I personally don't think that either board is responsible for anything, because I can see a board going, "We don't need to spend $10,000 to have a computer run our heating system, we can do it ourselves. We can turn our thermostats up ourselves," when nobody knew that that computer system was gonna make the adjustments that needed to be done. I can easily see a board saying, "We're not spending $10,000 on that."
Well, that's why the original thought was that we can adjust, but it's only a degree and a half either way, up or down in each room, where, you know, being told that, yeah, you'll be, you'll have adjustment in there, it's, it's not what it was, you know...
But isn't there a folder for the electrical work, for the HVAC, for, you know, the roof, all these things?
Yes.
I mean, there should be a packet here, and like, what he's saying is, you had someone that was overseeing all this, so now you go back to, "Oh, here we go, the HVAC, here's who signed off," all these documents.
No, there's nothing, it's not like that, it's not like they signed off on each individual item.
I'm not talking about supervisors, I'm talking about, there was someone, which is what he's saying, is accountable, 'cause they oversee, they were overseeing, you know, like, the, the roof, or they were overseeing the electrical work in here. You know, there, there are people, whether it be supervisors, you know, I mean, I know what he's saying, it's not really supervisors, there was really someone, I mean, supervisors would say, "Okay, we're off, you know, oh yeah, we went, we'll give $10,000, we'll give $5,000, whatever, to get things completed." However, there are people that were overseeing the project.
Right.
And that's what he's asking, you know, there should be documentation of, you know, when this was in, when this was installed, who oversaw this, who was in charge of that, who, and there should be documentation for all this.
But even if there is a document that says so-and-so, Bill Smith, I'm just making up a name.
The building's not even that old.
I'm just making up a name, even if Bill Smith said, "You can probably run this without this software," right? And save the township $10,000. So Bill Smith said, "We can probably do that," the point is, we're not doing that. It's not capable to do that.
The project manager would have made sure that they did what we hired them to do, so if that software was not on the original bid of what we hired them to do, then, and that comes back down to...
And this is only the first of many things that's going on.
But that comes back down to whoever made the decision to...
That's what I'm saying.
Right, to take you out of there, but at this point, it's out, so...
You know, unfortunately, and, and I hate that...
We can't just keep...
It's, it's unfortunately and frankly, you know, water under a bridge. I was dis, I was on the school board at the time when this was voted on, and I...
Unless somebody can go there.
I was, you know, I, I mean, you go back far enough and you go, but it, you know, what, what was done was done, and, you know, I, I respectfully disagree, I do think things like that have consequences, and two or three of those supervisors, you know, two, two of them, the, the two, the two that were driving that project are gone. You know, because these things should have consequences, and people should be...
But I don't think the supervisors, they didn't put other people in charge that were supposed to deflect us.
Yes, but, but you, you have to, and again, my opinion is that, you know, at the end of the day, we're the ones elected and we're the ones accountable to the citizens, and, you know...
We're just saying, not tracking...
While, while we don't micromanage, we have to make sure that we trust the people that, you know, we hired to do these things, whether they're full-time township employees or whether they're consultants. And, and, and I can tell you, it's not easy, you know, it, it, it is not easy. I'm not saying it's, you know, easy to find a good consultant or, you know, and get through this, or justify spending an extra, you know, $10,000.
But the building's not that old.
It is not that old, it should not...
And there's even more things down here.
Do I mean, I can sit here and say, it, it should...
So I hope we have a good, you know, file here on this building.
Yeah, it, it's a good one.
A good file. Tracking record, it's gonna be, it's gonna be one in many.
You know, to, to be, to be honest, and, you know, when I got here not too long ago, looking back for things that were done previously, they're hard to find, and it's not just on the building. And, you know, for future boards and future township managers, I think we're correcting that problem. But going back, and, and, and actually, and, and a culture shift, frankly, in terms of some of the employees that I've seen, saying, "We want these documents, you know, we want things recorded." Those, those weren't done before.
You're talking about permits and stuff, but this building itself...
No, I'm talking in general, like, and, but, but the issue you, the issue you bring up applies to everything, and it wasn't done. And moving forward, we're trying to make sure that that's done, so that future supervisors and future managers, because there will be, you know, it can go back and, and, and look through, but I'm not just, no, I'm talking about a lot of different things.
But after the board left, after the other two people left, okay, we were still working on this project. We moved from over there to over here, there should have been something at that point by the new managers and things, when we originally started, you know, saying this, stairs, what have you, you know, buildings, lights, what, there should be documentation for all that.
Yeah, I mean, those are the, the final decisions.
I don't know why there wouldn't, I don't know why you're saying there isn't.
That's what I'm saying, there should be.
Yeah, but from the beginning of...
There is, there is documentation on it.
But I'm saying from the beginning of the project, no, there's not, like, you don't, no, from the very beginning, no. You, you know, you're, you're, like, there's a line, and, you know...
What, what was this, when did we break ground on this?
It was, I started October 31st, so it was probably...
I don't know, we're losing track of what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, I don't know.
We need one more bid on this, correct? We're waiting on a bid for Midstate.
Yes, we're waiting on a bid.
So at this point, I'm gonna motion to table it, because we need another bid. For this amount of price, we need three bids anyways, don't we?
Uh, we don't have bids, we need, we need... It's under $10,000, I'd like to get another quote on it, a phone quote is all that's required under it.
Yeah, I do think we should at least get a...
Yeah, as soon as I get that other bid in, so I can place this on the agenda.
But I also think we should fix the problem, so that...
I'm upset.
So moving on to another problem with the building.
Did I have a...
Oh, I'm motioning to table it, do you have a second for that?
Second.
Do I have any other comments about it? Okay, so, all agreed to table, aye. So moving on to the next problem of the building, we have the inability for our cell phones to work in here, which isn't such a big deal for the township employees, but it is a big deal for the police officers and our first responders that are, enter into the building. So, we have a cellphone booster quote, we have one, because many companies do not do this, and that is $8,431.
This is in the budget, I'd have to budget it.
We have already planned to purchase this, it's within what we budgeted? What did we budget, 10?
Um, we have one of them.
Is that the maximum?
Yeah.
10 is the max.
I don't know, she's gonna look up, do, do you remember that, was that?
I don't remember that.
But we would all, what we authorize to be...
'Cause the budget's only for the maximum, right?
What we...
But what we authorize to be...
The budget's a guideline.
No, it's not, it's a budget voted on by the board.
Yeah, but we don't have to spend the money in the budget.
Correct.
It can be under.
It can be under.
It could be over as well, it's, it's a guideline.
If it's, if it's over...
And why are we arguing about the budget?
I don't know, we're arguing about everything apparently.
Because we're spending...
Right, but the budget's been approved, so if we have budget issues, then we need to come to the budget meetings that are at the end of the year and discuss it then.
Oh, okay.
I don't have it on here, quickly find.
I don't know, we'll be putting it in one of the... It was under capital purchases, which has $90,000 in it.
We want to put it in that, I thought we had it separate.
We discussed it separately.
Oh, I see what you mean, is it broken out into that?
It's in that category, but it's...
Yeah, we discussed it separately, but it, that's what I said, we discussed it separately as part of the category.
Right.
So at this point, with this budget, or with this amount, it's not to exceed this quote?
Yeah, when we discussed it, right.
So do I have a motion to approve this?
I motion to approve.
$8,431.
Motion to approve.
And I'll second, do I have any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Can I ask a question? Why, why do not cell phones work in the building?
The metal roof, there was a combination of the metal roof and the other material used, there's a firewall that was placed in the building, that was an after-construction thing, I think it's the combination of all of that. It didn't work a lot in our other building, did yours work in the other building? There were certain places in the other building, mine didn't work, but it was specifically this metal roof there.
You don't have to do it at the fire station either, it's just the building...
The high school's a black hole also, and happens to be...
Well, the back part was built in 90, 96, 97, somewhere around there.
So 25 years ago, now you're building your building today, I would think, somebody must have taken it...
She just said the high school...
The high school has the same problem, there's plenty of buildings.
Well, high school's what, 40 years old?
Not the new addition part, it is not.
It's all been remodeled, and it's all been remodeled, I mean, I was on the school board with...
Remodeling is not rebuilding them.
No, but you're adding new, you know, new building materials, you know, and, you know, honestly, you're gonna run, you, you run into, like, you're not designing, you're designing a building for building codes and things like that, not...
Well, you should be designing a building for the century that you're living in.
Yeah, but think, some, when you look at regulations, and again, I do this stuff too, when you look at regulations, you have to make sure you're, you're reading your construction regulations and, and obligations, and that does not take into account, you know, cell phones. Now, I would be voting no on this if emergency responders weren't involved, but the fact of the matter is, if, you know, if they're in here and, and you need something, and it's the only way to get a hold of them, I would hope you'd want them to get cellphone service in the building.
Well, certainly, I would have hoped that the people who built it, they, 20 years into the 21st century, would have thought, "Well, maybe we should make sure we get cell phones."
Again, like...
And a lot of times, you don't really know how a building is going to react, or how it's going to, if we're gonna have signal or not, until it, we're in the building.
And that is...
Well, that would be the United Construction Code.
That, again...
Building permits that should not, we have to do.
So the UCC really makes it that difficult?
Well, you, you won't, you, you won't know until you're done, you know, with, with new materials and everything else, you really won't know.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, well, you can...
Don't build a house.
You can, yeah, I mean, yeah, my cellphone doesn't work in my house.
Okay, moving on to special event requests, Blood, Sweat and Tears, Five Miler and 5K. Chief, you approved this one, I didn't see your signature on the copy that I have, but, okay.
What about the pension plan?
Oh, did I skip one? Sorry. Township non-uniform employee pension plan new hires discussion, do you wanna lead us on that, Jen?
I do, the currently, both uniform and non-uniform employees have a pension plan, which is called a defined benefit plan, defined benefit versus a defined contribution. A lot of the townships are now, all municipalities, a lot of them are going to a defined contribution plan, where there's a set amount that the township places in a pension plan for each employee, more like a 401K type of a setup, where you pick a percentage and you put that into that employee's account. They build it up till they're vested, and then after they retire, they're able to take it. Right now, we have a defined contribution, which is, in my opinion, a lot more costly for a township. I'm suggesting that for new hires, because we're already in the contribution plan now, the, in, the current employees, specifically for the non-uniform side, the uniform side is under contract, so that we cannot change anything without the contract. But I'd like to start looking into new hires, possibly moving to a defined benefit plan, I'm sorry, contribution plan versus defined benefit plan.
And is that something that just needs to be spelled out in the employee manual, which is what we're working on anyways, or separate?
No, necessarily, I don't know that, I think it does mention about a plan, I can look, but it just says that there is one, it doesn't really spell out exactly what, what your benefit is, so, just that, how many years vested or, and that would need to be passed by an ordinance. The second, under this discussion is, so that's the first item, the second, that was specific to new hires, is that there was a, an update done to the original resolution that created the non-uniform pension plan to exclude the insurance that the township employees pay, and the HSA, or the, not the HSA, the 457 plan that we can contribute to, which is like a, again, a 401K that we can put in, the township has nothing to do with it, we choose as employees to put in, in addition, an additional amount if we choose to or not. But that money is taken, subtracted from our gross pay, and we've had some pushback from some previous people that have retired, under system, wanted to know why, and it just currently came up, because our auditor caught that we're reporting it one way on one report, and then we're reporting it another way on another, and they said, "You either need to pick a lane and stay in it," basically. So it either needs to be updated or kept the same way it is, and our reporting just needs to match that. And this is something that Patrick really wanted to talk about as well, just to, to get everybody on the same page with it, but, again, it's subtracting money that our gross income, like, you know, if somebody makes $50,000 a year, and we choose to put 10% of our salary in, we're automatically kind of, like, why would we put in for... Yeah, it takes it away from us, as far as what our pension will be in the future, so...
And what's the pension we have now, for the employees?
The, we have a defined, we have a defined benefit plan. And what happens is, after your vested seven years, the last three years that you work, it's an average they take of those three years, and then it's 50% your pension is for your, that, how they try to make your...
What's the township pay towards the plan now?
The money comes from the state, so the township doesn't directly pay, it is funded by the money that we receive from the state. So it's basically paid by your state taxes.
And what are you proposing?
That move to a defined contribution.
Is it gonna be a maxing, matching contribution?
Um, it's, like, the township would pick a percentage, and each employee can either choose to put in zero to whatever they want.
And is the township matching anything?
The township would pick a percentage that they want to put in.
But we're not matching anything now, the state's paying it?
The state would also pay this matching contribution.
But so basically township money, we're gonna be paying more now towards pension with this new plan versus what the...
No, we're gonna be paying a lot less.
It's a lot less.
It's a lot less.
It's where all private...
Everyone's building all that.
So what happens to the state money then?
It gets placed in our account, the state has, makes a stipend to, it's called state aid, they, they put this money in our pension account. So I think right now, we're about, we're probably one of the higher townships as far as being funded. Like, every time somebody retires, it takes money out of that account, new money comes in every year for the employees that you currently, but we're probably one of the highest...
But if we're gonna do a defined contribution, then what happens to that state money? Does it still...
We still receive it, it still gets placed, but it's a less, it's, when we report to the state how much our liability is, it's less tax money that we're taking from the state. So that's when they're talking about pension reform, this is one of the biggest things that they're talking about, asking this...
We need to get ahead of this.
So what percentage we decide, the township decide, would come from that account?
The state aid, yes.
That's what I'm getting at.
There's a 3% safe harbor that has to go there, there's, you know, generally, you're matching then up to another 3%, so it's like...
That's what, 6%?
Encouraging the employees to put in, yeah.
Their full 6%.
Their full 6%, and then they would get, you know...
Regardless, the employees, like he's saying, would give 3%,
'cause that's safe harbor.
If they choose to put zero in, or 6% in, but it is less costly for the state to have to fund these, and that's why they're looking at it.
And, and like, these pensions, like, it's not sustainable, I mean, they made some changes at the state level recently to try to, you know, get that debt down, but frankly, you know, it's, we wanna be ahead of this, 'cause at some point, you know, this is gonna become a, it continues to become a major problem. I mean, the debt, and, and as accounting practice has changed, and that is on your, and, and they are changing accountability rules, like, this has to be on your balance sheet now, so you will, you'll corporately, you, you see this all being put on the balance sheets right now. So, yeah, the government, GAI, right, Government Accounting Office, changed the rules, I think, last year to reflect all this stuff on the, on the balance sheets, and, I mean...
How many pension plans are we currently paying now?
Um, I have...
I mean, not for...
People who have retired?
Correct.
Offhand, I don't know, I wanna say six or seven.
So at this point, can we, I, I'm in agreeance that I would like to move towards that.
Okay.
And I'm hearing that you are also in agreeance.
Yeah, I mean, this is, yeah, the...
So is that something we can have worked up to the next meeting, for Patrick to discuss it with us?
That we have to change the ordinance?
The 2003...
No, I remember, I know, there's two issues, there's the issue that our gross amount for the current plan that we have is kind of, I'm not sure how that ever went through, but the other one is that for... of, I'm not sure how that ever went through, but the other one is that for new hires and above, should look into the Defined Contribution Plan.
Yeah.
But the Defined Contribution would need to be done, either of both of these things, if you change the way that our gross income is reported, that would need to be done by ordinance. And the other one also, if you're changing new hire ordinance, you would have to adopt a new pension ordinance.
I mean, like I said, I, I think we're gonna have to change the way things are reported anyway, because the Government Accounting Office changed rules recently, and a lot of people are changing the way things are reported, because they have to. So I think, yeah, I'd like to see something from, like, Patrick's look at, and see where we can go to.
Whether.
Well, I think we need to look at both of those things regardless, and if we can have Patrick prepared to.
Yeah, getting ahead of this, what I'm afraid will happen if our balance sheet is bad, we will then be penalized by the state. We don't want that.
Right.
You know, because they will look at this and go, so I, I think they're moving that way. We need to get ahead of that before.
Patrick did say that he would be available for the workshop meeting if we wanted to take advantage of having the conversation about pensions at that point, and then moving from there on with all three of you supervisors. But I can have him give you a sample ordinance in the meantime.
Employee manual to work on yet.
I think I'd.
I'd, can we just, I'd rather just have him in the regular meeting.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Should I have him supply you with a sample ordinance for the?
For both of them?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, hear anything?
Yeah.
Because I think our workshop's gonna be pretty hefty with the rest. We only got through a third of the employee manual.
I think we got a little more than that, yeah.
All right, so now moving on to the special event request. Blood, Sweat, Tears, 5-Miler. Chief does have a, you do approve of that?
Yes.
Do we have any? Yes.
No, no, we're just ready to make a motion.
Oh, go for it.
Since he said he approved.
Go ahead.
I make a motion, we approve the special event request for Blood, Sweat &amp; Tears 5-Miler and 5K.
And I'll second. Do I have any questions about it? All those in favor? Aye. Special event request for Tor de Gretna, and Chief did approve that one also. Do you have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve the special event request for Tor de Gretna.
I'll second that. Do I have any questions about that one? All those in favor? Aye. Lemon County Conservation District Board nominations. There's two names for that. One is John Olive, and the second one is Jennifer Albright. Do we just need to give an order to which, we have to give two, correct? Or they're requesting that we give two?
First choice, second choice.
Do you have a preference? I?
I really.
Have a preference.
Oh, I did not.
You did not? Okay, well then I'll motion for John Olive to be first, and Jennifer Albright to be second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any questions on that? All those in favor? Aye.
Faith, you made the first on that, right?
I did, yes, with John and then Jennifer.
I was writing those.
Sorry.
That's okay.
In-car recording system approval. Southern Derry Township is looking to approve an in-car recording system. Patrick had some questions on this agreement. There were legal questions of who's accountable for things. Something about, let's see, Township Identifying Digital Alley for a Lot, that I would not agree to, as well as having the jurisdiction for any issues remain in Kansas. So he must have, he has some legalese issues.
We already signed one of these when we got the previous ones, so he didn't have issues before. Unless, unless they added something. I didn't compare word for word. I just looked at the, the cost.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to approve this in-car recording system for $6,911.50, with a conditional that Patrick look at it? Carefully, or?
It's two systems.
Is it two? I'm sorry. Oh, yes, two.
And we already have?
Two.
It's in the budget.
Right. Yeah, I'll make that motion condition on legal review.
I'll, I'll second that. Do I have questions about that? Okay, all of those in favor? Aye. Campbelltown Park, PA, American Water Grant. We received information, was this from Ritu that this was brought to our attention, or did the water company bring this to our attention?
Ah, the water company sent it to me, and then I sent it off to Ritu to see if we could piggyback on the Sunoco. Remember, they took out some of our plantings over there, and she said this needed to be used by the end of this year, so it would not be a good match for that. But as you see that back location of that park there, she said that would be a good.
Spot to use it in?
Spot to, to place the repair and buffer in there, and that we could tie it, we are required to do one public outreach program, which that would meet this requirement for our MS4 program for the year.
And would that reach it because we would partner with someone, or?
Because we would put, like, we're having a volunteer tree planting day. Come, we'll plant them, and then we'll talk about them, and tell you why they're so important to be planted, and more of an educational as you're planting, or as you're assisting in.
So you can use them as an educational plan.
Okay. Do you?
So what's the, yeah.
Have a motion for that?
I do.
Okay. They, each project is, can only go up to $10,000.
Right.
And they have a total of $3,500 in a grant funding across the board. But we have to have this in by March 29th, but the project has to be done by the end of this year. Am I summarizing that correctly, or?
Yeah, and we don't have any, I mean, that wouldn't, wouldn't be a problem, so.
We can look at other funding or other grants available, but.
My concern is that if we decide to do this, is this something, is someone in-house that's gonna spearhead, or?
Between Dawn, myself, and Scott, and we'll talk about that a little further on the agenda.
On the other MS4 stuff?
Yeah.
Is this something that you think we can handle?
I do.
That was my only question with that. Do you have any other? I need to see this copy. I know all your stuff is digital.
My phone's down to like 8%.
Excuse me, did these amended and reinstated pedestrian easement, or the carriage park, or some of these things, are they going before the planning commission, any of these? Has any of this stuff ever gone before the planning commission, or was, I mean, I didn't see.
What, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Just one thing off the back of the agenda. We're not even there yet.
Not there.
I'm on the old agenda. Gotcha.
Yeah, I, so I just need to make a motion that we apply for this grant.
Yes.
I make a motion.
And this is an MS4 outreach, will be used as an MS4 outreach for repair and buffer plantings. And I'll second that. And do I have any other questions? As regards to this part, this has not gone towards the planning commission.
Well, that I did want to know. I mean, I guess overall, I'm not seeing a lot of things go before the planning commission. I'm just asking why.
I don't, I disagree with that. Windermere did, and Soddy Carriage Park.
Some of these things have just, I mean, we're not utilizing the planning commission like I thought we would.
I'm.
In many ways.
Okay. I don't, I disagree with that statement.
It goes in front of the planning commission. We haven't had, we just had some recent applicants, and we have, we have stuff that have been waiting for a couple months that the, requested by them. Like, they came to run the planning commission, and did their review, and then went back to make changes, and then requested a loan, or an extension.
Even the zoning things have gone before the zoning hearing board. I mean, things are really, we're not utilizing the planning commission.
It's not required to go in front of the planning commission. It goes to the zoning officer, gives a review, denies it, and then tells them that they need to go to the plant, that does not go to the planning commission.
From what I've witnessed, with our township, as well as other things with our townships, lots of things should be going for the planning commission.
What specifically has not gone through the planning commission?
Well, I'm just asking about these things right now.
Windermere and Carriage Park both have.
Yes, Carriage Park went through the planning commission. That's already built. It's a closeout of that development, so that the township could take over the road dedications. That's what this is. The other one is an amendment, which did not need, was not required to go before the planning commission. Again, it was an amendment on their plan that had to come before the board. The board approved it, and now it's just the signature that we're requesting approval for Faith to be authorized as chairman design.
I'm just saying, people within the township have questioned that. A lot of things, we're not utilizing.
Oh, then I would ask you to ask them to come in and come to a meeting.
That was all done in a public hearing. The amendment was done in a public hearing, and the carriage park, either as the carriage park planning.
I know, but I thought there was more talk about that.
Everything that is supposed to go before the planning commission is going before the planning.
No one on the planning commission has, as far as I know, complained about not, as far as I know, everything that has to go for the planning commission has gone through the planning.
This is just the township making sure that Carriage Park, that the developer finishes what they were supposed to finish.
Yeah, I understand about that.
Right, that's what they're doing now.
And I'm saying there's been some other things.
No, we're talking about this grant, applying for this grant. And we got sidetracked with the last two things on the agenda. So I have a motion to approve this.
The grant, yeah.
And I have seconds. Do you have any other questions about the grant? Okay, all those in favor of applying for this grant, say aye. Aye. Okay, moving on to the back page. Fire Study Update. John, thank you for being so patient in this long meeting. Do you have anything to update?
I turned some things over to the township manager. I've completed the executive summary, I've completed what I can of the risk assessment. I'm still waiting on some sort of data, and hopefully it'll be forthcoming, if I can continue. I planned the next few weeks, and then start looking at equipment manpower, things like that. I make progress.
Thank you.
Like I said, I'm just waiting on some, some data.
Okay, wonderful. Jenna, the, whatever he's given you, you have not given us yet, and I missed it, did you?
No.
Okay.
I was trying to look fine in all my desk, and I did miss it.
That's fine. I just didn't know if I missed something, that's all. With the plethora of emails, sometimes they get lost in my shuffle. Okay, wonderful. Any questions or anything?
Nope.
Okay.
You're, you're good, right? You're, you're satisfied with what you're?
Yeah, to this point, yeah.
Okay. MS4 program. Jenna, do you wanna?
Scott, Dawn, and I sat down with the checklist that Cara provided to us from Ritu, just kind of getting a handle on what we can handle in-house, and what would need to be handled through Ritu's associates, specifically with Cara involved. Just to try to save the township money, we're here, we already are doing a lot of the things that were on the list. There were three or four things that we identified that we needed some clarification from Cara on, but we felt that the majority of the program would be able to handle in-house. Dawn is the MS4 coordinator for the township, and with Scott and I helping her in some of the educational outreach programs, and other items that are required, the outfall inspections and things of that nature, Scott said that he would handle with Sam and Dawn. Sam from the sewer department knows where all of those items are located throughout the township. He and I looked at them this year, again, to save the township money. But it looks like we'll be able to take care of 95% of that project, or that, that program. So we sat down, we kind of assigned tasks to each employee, the three of us, and we have to do like a written program, but has to be on file, so we'll have like a binder of one location that we'll be able to pick up, and if DEP representative comes in, we'll be able to supply that information rapidly. So we're getting.
That's fantastic. I wish the other people that just left were here to know that, because that's one major thing that was never done in the past, and we risked being fined by tremendous amounts of money, and they were not done. So that's one thing we're cleaning up.
Among many.
Yeah, among many. All right, so the amended and restated pedestrian path easement for Windermere, we just need to approve my signature on that, or that I am allowed to sign that? Do I have a motion to do that?
So move.
I will second. Any questions on that? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. So moving on to Carriage Park Phase 3, this was the agreement that we've been working on with them since, I don't know, October, September, August, something in that sort. So we've been over that several times. Do I have a motion for me to sign that?
I make a motion for signature.
And I'll second. Any other questions about that? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Good and Welfare? What's that?
No.
Did you say?
I delayed on that. I did.
You were delayed aye. He was a delayed aye.
Sorry.
Did we miss anything, Jenna? Do we have anything? All right, so we're looking at, for the workshop, we're going to be discussing employee manual, insurance bids, and?
Pension, oh, not pension.
Not pension, and the.
Streets.
No, the heating, the software.
Oh, yeah.
What's the streets?
Uh, Scott, did you want him as?
Oh, yes, and discussing the bids on that.
Motion to approve.
I will second. All those in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned. Next meeting is February 27th for the workshop, and March 12th for supervisor meeting.